Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. The Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors, August the 20th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Here, would you please join us in a moment of silence? Join us in pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is agenda received as proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments on the agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item two is public comments. Does anybody like to speak to the board this time? You have three minutes. If it's not agenda item.
I will.
Come to the podium, please, and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Benjamin Rangie. I'm a farmer. I reside at 11607 Ricker Road. I'm from Foxtown Ship and I'm here to discuss briefly a potential solution for some of our road troubles that were caused by wet weather this spring.
Kathy, is this subject going to be on next week? On the regular agenda or no?
No. Possibly the bridge embargo one will be, which these gentlemen...
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, in the spirit of keeping this brief, I just want to show you a quick video from April 10th. This was Ricker Road.
That's all right.
Well, what you saw there was I had an implement coming back from the field and it just rained the next morning. It hadn't rained the day before we were in the field, but Ricker Road was so soft from the bad weather and the road surface was so damaged that the implement collapsed through the surface of the road and tore the wheels off. That machine took $14,000 worth of damage. And as we all know, it wasn't just that strip road. That was just representative of what was happening all over northeast Iowa. And I want to thank Kathy and her crew for, with limited resources and a budget to live with, for doing such a good job of taking care of our county roads. And so I put together a few slides. This is a snip from the Waterloo Courier. This is from 2016. The road problem isn't every year. It seems to be happening every year. And maybe it has something to do with bigger tractors, bigger trucks, more traffic, more commerce. And here's, you saw the video, but here's a picture of that Anhydrous applicator that fell through the road. It just literally fell through the crust of the road. And the problem hasn't gone away. These slides were taken just a few days ago. Kathy has hauled tons and tons of gravel on our road in an attempt to shore things up. But, you know, this is what, the left picture is what it looks like after it's dry or after a quick rain, after a couple tents of rain, we're back to the mud going through. Even on a dry day, the right slide kind of exemplifies that. So the solution I'd like to propose to you is a very, what I think is a very simple solution that we can borrow from what we do in our farm fields. And that's just simply install a drainage tile up through the road. If you look in the lower corner of this, down here, most of the better fields in our county have a pattern grid tile sample where they pulled in plastic drainage tile like this, like they make at Princeco and Jessup or many other places. It's just a plastic tube with slots. It's plowed in very easily with a, with an ag tractor or bulldozer type setup. We have many contractors in the area and it's relatively low cost install. I also farm in other adjoining counties and I've seen Buchanan and Howard Counties do this too, so we're not alone on borrowing this idea. But this is the section of Ricker Road that I'd like to propose we take a look at using this low cost solution. It's just short of a half mile. On the left in the blue circle is my residence and farm headquarters. It drains down to sort of a draw and the red arrows point the flow of the water. But what I propose is that we pull in a plastic tile right in the roadbed, like I had, just for, you wouldn't necessarily have to have this kind that has a mesh sock on it, but just to wear suspenders and a belt, we'd put a sock on so it might have a longer useful life. I would guess it'd have a useful life of a century, once you do it. And then we would connect that tile. You could outlet it in the ditch, but I have the road crossing form from the adjoining landowners who said they'd be happy to let that water flow into their field tiles that go through their system so we wouldn't be dumping water on top of the ground. And then you would, so you would never overload their tile system. The right picture is what they call a stand pipe or a relief pipe, that if we ever had a big rain, a two or three inch rain, that it would just bubble out and go down egress through the waterway rather than overload the neighbor's tile. So there would be no liability for overloading their tile, although if you're familiar with this process, the drain tile, one tile line up the road wouldn't hurt. But what I'd like to propose is Kathy's in possession of a $7,500 proposal from Hershberger Tiling in Jessup to simply pull a tile up the road and connect it to the field tiles. I think, I think you'd be pleased. It's, it's, it's a project that I think will, I highly personally believe will be very successful. There's a chance that it wouldn't work. It's gonna, it's gonna damage the road temporarily. We're gonna have to use some of our resources to grade the gravel away, pull the tile in and then put it back. But it's a nice strip of road to try it on, very friendly neighbors. I've talked to all the neighbors, they're in favor of the project. And I'd like to see your approval for it in future sessions. It's kind of a $7,500 project to learn if this would solve a lot of future problems and this continued use of a lot of gravel and resources to keep up our roads. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, we tried, but we did it on a very small budget. So with that, I ask for your kind consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else like to speak to the board at this time?
I'm Brian Oldtrugge, I'm from Reedland. I farm in the area. And recently they put a 32 ton load limit on county line, Bremer Blackhawk County line. This road is the main artery for the local farmers to go to the ethanol plant in Fairbank. Talked to Kathy this morning, she's considering raising it so we can go across it with semis. And I got 56 signatures of local farmers trucking outfits that would be more than willing to...
You could hand those to the auditor over here if you choose to and we'll put those on file.
All right, thank you. And she's considering changing it and that would greatly help us out in that area to get our crops to the market. Thank you.
Thank you.
The change she's supporting is the change you're also supporting, then? Okay, nothing different.
Okay, is there anybody else like to speak to the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item three, claims and payments.
The total for the week is $401,167.36. That includes about $107,000 for NAF Care over at the jail.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the resolution? Roll call, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Moving on to item four, project, receiving project updates from department heads and/or elected officials. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. I wanted to give you a brief update on our construction projects. Last Friday afternoon, we did finish Raymond Road reconstruction project there, the interchange with Highway 218, excuse me, Highway 20 and Raymond Road. That is open now, being used by lots of traffic. It turned out very smooth and it's a nice improvement to that, the concrete that was formerly there. I wanted to give you a brief look at what's going out on Cedar Wopsy, what's happening out on Cedar Wopsy. We did close Cedar Wopsy from Highway 218 to Highway 63 yesterday morning. I've told you how we are resurfacing that roadway. We're gonna make it two feet wider when it's in its finished state. It will be a safer road. We are placing six inch pavement markings along that route as well as a continuous rumble strip. I wanted to show you what's, some of our preliminary work, how we get that widening done before the actual new asphalt is placed on the roadway. So I've just got six or seven slides here from yesterday afternoon. And one of the first orders of work is establishing a straight line so that we know how much to widen, so the contractor knows how much to widen that roadway. It's being widened approximately two feet on each side and about five inches deep. So here's the machine that PCI is using to widen the roadway. And it's this, this two foot wide strip right here, and it's right next to the adjacent, the existing asphalt. So that gets milled out and carried away. And it's actually going over to the Cedar Wopsy Bridge project, this film material. Once we have the new trench, then, this is the roadway right here. You can see this is a sweeper coming behind that. It's sweeping that material off the roadway. And then there's a, some, a tack coat. That's what we use to get the new asphalt to stick to the old asphalt and it's placed right along the edge of the existing asphalt roadway. And here's that two foot wide trench. This is the small paving machine that Aspro has. This is where the asphalt gets poured into the little paver. And then here you can see the truck dumping into the asphalt paver. You can see the new asphalt wedge being placed into the trench. And then this is the last photo where we are getting a good compaction and that's what's gonna give us the durability that we need for the roadway to last the next 40 or 50 years. Later this week, we will have, the contractor will be removing the concrete over at the Highway 63 portion of the project, the very east end of the project. Once that is complete, there will be a 10 inch drop off there. And we are asking that the public please obey our construction signing, our construction fencing, the cones and the barricades. Yesterday, we had people moving those, coming off Highway 63 and moving the fence alongside. Well, in two more days, we're gonna have a big drop off there. So we really need the public to obey our construction signing and we're looking forward to a good project once this is complete. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Kathy, I know you've told us, but when do you expect that to be completed?
We're, depending on the weather, we're just forecasting the end of September. It's gonna be four or five weeks at least.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item five, minutes approved for August the 13th, 2019.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item six is a consent agenda that's to be made with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on this? Roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Moving on to item seven, contracts and agreement. This is a resolution, 2080 agreement between Blackhawk County and the city of Dunkerton for contracting law enforcement services through the Blackhawk County Sheriff's Office with a term commencing on August 219, terminating October 31st, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Anybody got any questions for the sheriff on this? I'm assuming we're doing this until they hire a police chief?
This is a three month contract to try and get them moving. As you know, the city has a codified obligation to provide law enforcement coverage and they weren't really moving on that. We provided law enforcement coverage as an emergency basis for free because we also were the ones that ended up doing the criminal investigation on their chief. We didn't want to look like there was some appearance of impropriety on that, that we were trying to do so to make money on them, but at some point, we wanted to get them moving towards looking for a new chief. We don't want to be their law enforcement provider up there.
Do they have a chief at this time?
They don't, but they are in the process of looking. So we made it a three month contract so that the rest of the community or the county is not providing or supplanting their obligation to provide law enforcement coverage. So that's what this contract provides.
Board, any questions? Do you have a motion on this?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Chelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, moving on to other business, item eight. This is a motion to request for purchase capital equipment submitted by Kathy Nicklaus, county engineer, be approved. This is for a 2019 Dodge Ram 1500 in amount of $23,784.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So this is part of our FY '20 capital budget request, just a continuing replacement of the trucks, the light duty trucks in our fleet. We already disposed of the vehicle, the truck that we, that is replacing this. This will go to be our on-call truck, so the truck that carries around barricades and cones and that type of thing during off hour emergency situations. We did put together some specifications, two page specifications. I gave you some of that information. We wanted a four, four wheel drive, regular cab, eight foot bed, et cetera. We did send out proposals to 12 different dealers. We only received two bids this time, one from Dan Deary Motors and the other from Bill Caldwell Ford. And the Dan Deary Motors bid is the low bid, it meets our specifications. I would ask that we be allowed to purchase this vehicle.
Okay, Board, any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And then B is a motion to authorize direct the interim co-finance director to set the date of the hearing to be held at 9:05 September the 3rd. This is for a proposed FY '20 budget amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item C is discussion, possible board action, the purchase of land at the Raymond Range Training Facility. So I see we got some people here today. Sheriff, did you want to talk on this first or you want to hear comments from the audience? How do you want to go about it?
Let's let them speak first.
Okay. I do believe we've got some, the board has received some emails. They should be included in the folder and I think there's a few phone calls also, so... Okay, if anybody'd like to talk about this, come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Does anybody want to talk about this?
Rick Bishop, 100 Hunter Ridge Drive in Raymond. I'm probably no more excited to have the range next door to me as, as most of the other people that you're gonna hear from, but I wanted to kind of focus my comments specifically on the purchase of the additional land and not the, the range itself. Back when the range was created, we were assured that it would be safe and that Tony would do everything he could to lower the noise level. I guess I'm concerned that there's some reason to think that the range may not be as safe as, as was first thought because of some shots that possibly originated from the range and hit a structure. I guess if that's the only direction that the, that the overshots went, I'm not too concerned personally because that's not the direction I live. But if there's chances that it's, that's being shot in other directions as well, then obviously I would be concerned. My biggest concern, I guess, associated with the purchase of the additional land is that that additional land be used only for improved safety and sound mitigation and that not be used as an opportunity to expand the range further and provide additional shooting galleries or, or structures of any sort. Tony has assured us that that isn't his plan, but I don't think he plans on being sheriff for the next 89 years either, so I guess I'd like to see something done to make sure that if this 22 additional acres are purchased, that that purchase somehow be restricted to just allowing it to be used for sound mitigation and additional berm. The, kind of the analogy that I think of is when land is gifted to the city or the county or whatever for use as a park, there's some sort of deed restriction or something that says that it can only be used for such and such purpose. And I'd like to see something like that put in the, the sale contract deed, whatever you call it, from, from basic materials so that they, they sell that to the county with the understanding that nothing is built on that other than berm and other than trees and other devices for, for sound mitigation. So that's, that's my biggest concern is associated with the expansion of the range and I'll let others just talk about how unhappy we are about the range in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else? Come up to the podium, please.
My name is Jack Knapp and I live on Raymond Road. My farm borders the quarry and the property that Sheriff Thompson wants to buy. I wish I could have filled the room with the people that are opposed to this gun range. I talked to a lot of people, I even went door to door. Many reasons given for not showing up, but the one that I found most interesting is that people are actually intimidated by Sheriff Thompson. He's a gifted speaker, he's a good politician. They've been to previous town halls and I've seen that he's always prepared with his answers and will skillfully dismiss anyone who disagrees with him. He effectively sweats the general public when he shows up in uniform with his deputies at his side. People don't like talking or arguing with authority. Not that that's a bad thing all the time, but he's listening to a minority of people who, who agree with him, hoping the rest will stay silent. I will tell you though, that the six residents who showed up for the most recent town hall in Raymond is not representative of the opposition to this gun range and purchase or expansion. It was the tip of the iceberg of people opposed to this training facility in their backyard. Folks are afraid to speak up and get involved, reluctant to try to fight government, so I intend to relay some of their thoughts as well as my own. For example, I presented a couple of shell casings that I found in my yard. An internet search revealed that they were law enforcement issue, Remington 223s. I suggested they were carried off the shooting range by birds of some sort, perhaps crows. The sheriff wasn't buying that and stated they pick up all their shells. I was soundly ridiculed, but who else would be getting, or how else would the shells get in my yard? I pointed out the eagles have left the area. Did they move on due to gunfire or die from eating lead bullets? I was now exposed as an opponent of the gun range and Sheriff Thompson's plan. He looked at me like, okay, game on. Same for the bullet holes in the neighbor's garage. The sheriff's department foot the bill to replace the sighting, but Sheriff Thompson refuses to believe the shots came from his range. I raised the question of groundwater contamination from lead. He had all the answers at the ready. I cited an EPA report that exposed the shooting range. The shooting ranges are the worst toxic waste sites in the country and are basically unregulated. He touted all the things they do to make it safer. He reported the wall in the quarry is tested every year and is safe. I'm sure my wall goes to the same water table as the one in the quarry. I said it may not be contaminated this year or next year, but I think it's just a matter of time, given the amount of shooting that's going on down there. I wondered aloud if this quarry is destined to be a toxic waste site, to be cleaned up by future generations. Everything I brought up was dismissed by Thompson as he mused, he deals with irrational ideas all the time. Sheriff Thompson stated, stated there is no hidden agenda here. I'm not buying it. Regarding the 22 acres of farmland to build berms and plant trees for sound mitigation, I believe he could plant a forest and it won't deaden the incessant gunfire sound we're hearing emanating from the quarry. There was already a wooded area and a huge berm built by the quarry decades ago between residents to the west and northwest of the quarry and the gun range. Yet, in addition to gunfire, I can hear every word they speak down there as they bark their orders through the megaphone. He can't build a berm higher than the one that's already there surrounding the quarry. The problem is the gunfire sounds resonate and reverberate off the stone walls of the quarry so that one would think we live in a war zone out there instead of Raymond, Iowa. The 22 acres is north of the shooting range and is currently being farmed. Building berms to the north will not help anyone to the west on Raymond Road. The only thing it might do is capture a stray bullet and we know that that happens. There is nothing stopping him from building higher berms around the actual shooting range that they have now. He doesn't need the 22 acres. In fact, he already told the farmer not to plant 20 feet up from the berm because they're gonna raise it. I guess the dirt got delivered somewhere else or something fell through there, but that may still be in the works. The sheriff stated in his request to the board that some people don't like him because he took advantage of a golden opportunity. While Thompson may spin this as moving his department forward, the operative words in that statement are, "I took advantage." He took advantage of the citizens of Raymond, particularly those on Raymond Road and those in proximity to the quarry, who now listen to constant gunfire mere yards from their back doors and is now trying to do it again to expand and buy the range. He chose between having the premier gun range in the state versus pissing off half the sleepy town of Raymond and chose the shooting range. We are forced to deal with the gunfire at all hours of the day. A pre-k to second grade school is next door to the range and kids listen to gunfire during recess and outdoor time. We put up with gunfire during evening meals, family time, past children's bedtimes and even on weekends. Our pets cower and whine. Our two churches in town now call the shooting range to ask them to refrain from shooting during the hours when there's a funeral. Raymond residents have family gatherings ruined and can no longer enjoy their yards without listening to what sounds like a war zone. And property values, I won't even go there. Let's talk about our veterans. I know Sheriff Thompson is a veteran and let me say I have the utmost respect and gratitude for all who served. I have no idea what his war experience may have been, but I do know what some of our veterans who live on, in Raymond have experienced. And I know how much they hate being reminded of a time they would like to forget by the sound of constant gunfire and would like to live in peace. What I don't understand is Thompson's total disregard for his fellow veterans, some who might not deal with constant gunfire as well as he does, by dismissing their concerns and squashing resistance. As you know, this range was built and approved over the objections of many concerned residents in Raymond. Those concerns have been proven right. The sheriff promised when this range was going in that the gunfire noise would be no louder than the spoken word, is the phrase I remember. He said he intended to be a good neighbor. He said it would only beat Blackhawk County sheriffs using the gun range. He fails miserably on all three points. Thompson's deputies and Blackhawk County sheriffs are allowed to use the range at their leisure. They can bring friends to the range to shoot. Surrounding area police departments are allowed to shoot and I don't know who else. But clearly, he has not kept his word as the gunfire never stops. He stated they are building habitat in the lake for the fish. Sheriff's deputies can bring their wives and kids for gun certification and enjoy the lake. Here's the scenario I see unfolding at this quarry. Sheriff Thompson wants to pay for it, but the county owns the deed. This now becomes the responsibility of the county instead of Basic Materials Corporation. There has been restricted access to this area because of the liability issues for decades. Basic Materials now unloads that liability and thrusts it on the county. It would become a county park and Blackhawk County Sheriff Training Facility with boating, hunting and fishing for the exclusive use of the Blackhawk County Sheriff's Department and anyone they choose to allow in. It's already that way. By buying it, it just cements the deal. How can Sheriff Thompson expect anything less than bitterness, resentment and opposition for ramming through this misguided decision to locate a shooting range in our backyard? Much less purchasing and expanding it. All the Raymond residents get out of it is the incessant gunfire at all hours of the day. Well, Thompson will tell you what he wants, or tells you there's no hidden agenda, this doesn't pass the smell test. Thompson's talking points of how much money he is saving the taxpayers with the training facility don't hold water with the residents who listen to gunfire all day. The county will end up funding and paying for future... The county will end up funding and paying for future improvements for the Blackhawk County Training Facility if they own it. I believe it is disingenuous of Sheriff Thompson to try to sell to the board and the citizens of Raymond that if the Blackhawk County sheriffs own this land that it will not be developed and become a bigger problem in the future. Thompson has given his word that he won't expand the shooting range. What about the next sheriff and the one after that? He also stated at our town hall that if this deal falls through that nothing more can be done to mitigate noise. This is just another attempt to intimidate the residents of Raymond to not resist him. Renting for a dollar a year doesn't seem to hinder him from building and doing what he wants down there. There's another building going up as we speak.
Jack, why don't you wrap it up here so other people have a chance?
Thompson closed his letter stating that this is not controversial. Nothing could be further from the truth. Raymond residents are appealing to the Board of Supervisors to do something, and I don't know exactly what that something's going to look like, to rectify the problem of incessant gunfire in Raymond by the very people sworn to serve and protect. Bringing our concerns to Sheriff Thompson falls on deaf ears. We are the collateral damage, and we are tired and some tired of it, and something has got to be done about it. Help us stop this madness of nonstop gunfire in our town. Buying this property is not the answer. It will be another nail in the coffin for the town of Raymond. You must reject this purchase proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else like to address the board at this time? Please state your name and address for the record.
Eileen Delagudel, 6616 Dubuque Road. I live straight across from the gun. These guys have presented a wonderful reason where that money should go to. We have roads in Blackhawk County that are a complete mess and still not fixed. I mean, this could be no better than addressing the problems of the real taxpayer. The taxpayers in Waterloo, it's great that demolition, the crusty old houses that are around there and the convention center. This money does not need to be hid away in the police playground across the street.
Okay. Is there anybody else like to address the board at this time? Anybody else? Okay. Board, any questions or comments? Tony, there was a couple of questions from the last meeting, and you might have answered them in the emails. One was, the question was on that discretionary 40% fund. Where was that written down that the sheriff has that authority for that?
That's been both past practice and that's how we've been delegating that for...
So there really isn't anything in writing?
Yeah.
Does, and then the other question I got, is there, does any revenue come from the range?
It does generate revenue. I would tell you that it's essentially budget neutral with the only expense for that range being the ancillary costs of maintenance and upkeep and the electricity that it maintains.
So the revenue is reported on the budget each year?
It, yeah. So what we did on that 40% of the room and board costs, we created a revenue side as well. And so there is revenue generation both on hosting of training as well as there's an ancillary usage fee that comes in for that as well. And so there is...
But as far as your yearly annual budget, it doesn't show up on your budget as revenue like Parks, Wood, and Conservation. Okay. That's all I had. Somebody else got questions?
I guess the question I have would be for Pete. A good point was brought up in the initial presentation of, can it be written into the agreement that there be no expansion of the actual facilities?
Or what about an encumbrance? One of the things that we talked about is an encumbrance on those 22 acres.
Well, first of all, the, this is a sale between a private landowner and the county. So it would be a little bit unusual where you, the buyer, are asking the private landowner who is selling you the property to put restrictions on it. A little bit unusual.
What about a board, some sort of board action?
Well, that, that would be possible, and probably the best way to handle that would be some kind of official action by the board. The, you've got a problem with the board extending this for a very long period of time. New board could come in, even though you established some kind of rule or precedent, that new board could change its mind. And just as a word of caution here, you want to be careful about putting restrictions on this property because you just don't know what you're going to be using this property for in the future. So restrictions that you place on it now will have an impact on your future use. So that's, that's something to be aware of.
Could a future board since that if this was voted on today, it'd be by resolution, could a future board by resolution in the future sell it?
Yes. Yes, there would be no restriction on the county selling this in the future.
Board, any other questions?
I was wondering if you could just speak a little bit to the sound and safety measures that can be done with the purchase and without the purchase.
Right. So what I indicated to you is, it's not that we haven't done anything, and it's not that we can't continue to do things. It's kind of, I was thinking as I was driving in this morning, I feel a little impotent in the efforts that we've put forward so far. I've planted over 500 trees. We've built a berm in cooperation with county secondary roads between the firing ranges and the city of Raymond right now, and that berm continues to build, and that's ditch cleanout stuff. What we do is take the ditch cleanout and save county roads, transporting it to other places. That continues to grow and increase in size, but it's, it's like, it's like kind of a futile effort creating sound mitigation where the sound isn't. All of those weapons are oriented north, and that 22 acres is immediately behind the berms to the north. And so there's a reason why you build walls along the interstate in a residential area. Those walls work. They help mitigate sound. They create collision for that sound. Right now, there's nothing there. There's the berm that collects the lead and nothing else. And so those 22 acres, we don't have access to. Our berms are being built up to, with the clearance of the 20 feet behind that Jack actually alluded to, as we build those berms higher, we actually are to our property limit right now. And so I can't go any further. So it doesn't make a lot of sense. I keep doing it because I, I promised that I would continue to do sound mitigation things to the degree that I can and to the degree that 20 years from now, those trees will mature and they will do something, but they're not going to have the impact and the immediacy that we're going to be able to have if we move forward with, with this plan. So really, and I get every comment that's made, and I get the frustration. The unfortunate thing is I don't, I don't get the luxury of weighing my decisions against 15 people's choice or 15 people's consideration. I weigh it against 135,000, and that's the agency's decisions that I have to decide. Our training impacts the entire county. And so when I took advantage of an opportunity, I made sound decisions and my staff made sound decisions against the benefits of the entire county. And so that's what that property represents. Moving it forward now, nothing changes. For the next 99 years, that gun range doesn't go away with a 99-year lease. That sound doesn't change unless I have the ability to change it. And what little bit I can do now by planting trees and allowing those berms to slowly build up with the secondary road ditch cleanout stuff, again, where the sound isn't being generated from, makes me feel like I'm doing something, but kind of spitting in the wind towards where the actual impact can be had because the sound is actually emanating from that north. So I can actually build and I can actually create and actually demonstrate both safety and sound mitigation at the point where the sound is emanating from. And right now, I don't have access to it. Right now, I don't have the ability to do it. So that's the point, and there isn't any interest in, in creating more gunfire. There isn't any interest in developing more ranges. That's why I had no hesitation in saying I don't have any interest in, in developing more range fire, more, more, more training opportunity, more anything. This is an opportunity for me to do what I told those citizens I'm going to continue to try to do. Planting trees and all that stuff, again, we keep doing it, but it is somewhat futile at this point because it's the best we can do with where we're at right now. But there is opportunity. There is greater opportunity. So that's my hope, is that we can do more with that property. We can do mitigation technique. We can do trees. We can do berms. We can do things that will help capture more of that sound. And again, I think there's opportunity there.
Tony, Mr. Knapp had mentioned, well, you talked about the commitment to residents, but he talked about the firing happening all hours of the day, and I don't know that it never stops.
We calculated all the firing that happens on our, all the coordinated firing training that happens out there is between 30 and 40 days a year. So that's 365 calendar days, 30 to 40 days of actual range qualification, range training, where there's actual firing, law enforcement training firing going on. Now, that doesn't take into consideration times where an officer may go out and shoot on their own time. Those I can't calculate. But we also recognize that I was out there a couple Thursdays ago, and I thought somebody was firing on our range, went down to see who was shooting, and there was nobody on our property. It sounded like they were, but it was somebody further to the east that was shooting. So we may be getting blamed for things that aren't actually happening on our property. It sounded like they were. I was totally convinced that they were on our property. But, so that's happening too.
If I had to vote again, I would have voted against this to begin with because just like Jack said, thinking about anyone, just one veteran, if one veteran's suffering out there, it's upsetting because to this day, I still don't like the sound of gunfire. I go to a funeral and it's upsetting. At least I know what's happening. And with little kids, it really upsets me. I was out there several times at the school when these shots were being fired and there was kids on the playground, and that, that's not right, I don't think, especially in today's world, what's going on.
Can I add a follow-up comment to the response you got from the county attorney?
Hey, come up to the podium, please. State your name again for the record.
Yeah, Rick Bishop, 100 Hunter Ridge Drive. I heard him say it was a bit unusual for the buyer to ask the seller to put in a deed restriction or whatever the term is, but I guess, is that a bad thing that it's unusual? I guess I'm not sure whether it's disallowed or if it's just unusual.
No, yes, it is. It's allowed. You could do it.
And I mean, if the county shouldn't be asking, I'd be happy to ask him to do it. I mean, we probably have more to benefit from it than the county does anyway. And to me, the, what he, I thought he portrayed as, as the good news of the future board being able to change it, to me, is, is the worst news. We don't want anybody to be able to change it, and that's the beauty of having, I think that's the beauty of having it in a, in a deed restriction. If that deed restriction gets passed on to the next seller, well, so be it. I've got deed restrictions on my property that get passed on to the next seller.
Even if those restrictions were in there, then a next board could change those.
Can they change a deed?
I don't think so. I think that if the, if the Board of Supervisors sets a policy today, future board can change it. But if you have a deed restriction in your deed, you're, you're going to be bound by that. Future boards are going to be bound by that.
Thank you.
But they could sell it.
Yes, they could.
Tony, you've mentioned that several times in your extensive emails and conversations that that was something you actually encouraging us to do.
Absolutely, yeah. Rick and I are on the same sheet of music on this. That, and really, I don't know that, I know that I'm not going to do anything, and I find it difficult to believe that a future sheriff is going to do development of more shooting ranges behind those impact berms. That, that's not wise. But encumbering that land in some way makes sense so that there is assurance that there's no further development other than sound and safety mitigation out there. That makes sense. So we're on the same sheet on that.
I guess I wasn't here at the time this range was established, and so I'm having a hard time understanding why an area so close to residential area was picked.
It was actually offered.
Ideally, it wasn't the best location. Let's put it that way. You know, you'd like to have that out in an isolated area. Is there, they're at school there, right?
Sure.
Yeah.
And that's, oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's kids there.
Yeah.
And like I said, there's more than one veteran in Raymond, too, and Tony, Tony's disregarding the thought about those veterans.
Craig, Tony's not disregarding anyone.
Post-traumatic stress disorder. Yes, you are.
Tony's got 21 years and six deployments. Tony's not disregarding anyone. Tony gets it. Tony's trying to make it better.
No, you're not.
91, 99 years of us not doing much of anything but continuing to fire out there, or Tony's trying to fix it by making it quieter. That's what this vote really is. That's really what this vote is about.
With that pit back there, you're never going to get rid of the sound.
I'm doing everything I can possibly do to make it quieter. Give me the tools to make it better. We're there for 99 years, whether we make it better or we don't do much at all. That's the difference.
Do you, do you let the people know out there every time you're going to fire? No.
We put the flags up every time. We've got a citizens working group that we establish to the rules that we follow every time we employ the rules, every time.
So one, one guy goes out there to fire, does he raise the flag?
Yes. That is the rule.
So how do, how are you supposed to see that flag?
It's on both sides of the range. It's on both ends along the, along the train tracks. We have a 30-foot flagpole on both sides of the range.
Okay, please, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
If you live three blocks away, four blocks away, or down in the other area by the ballpark...
I, I don't, I don't know how else to mitigate that, Craig.
Well, I wouldn't want them going off in my neighborhood. Let's just say like that.
And I, and I, I agree. I understand.
And you wouldn't want them going off in your neighborhood either, right, Tony?
I live a mile from the gun club, Cedar Falls Gun Club. I, I get it.
Would you come up to the podium, please?
I would just like to ask a question.
You come up podium there and give your name and address, please. Need to have it for the record.
My name's Nancy McKenna, and I live on Raymond Road due west of this property. And I would like to understand, everything that I've heard here is that we're going to build berms to the north. We're going to build berms to the north. There's a half a mile, three quarters of a mile to the next farms that are up there. Now, Jack's is closer. The sound that comes up over that wall due west, that's all my neighbors on Raymond Road, across the road into town. There's, what, what is this building to the north? How is that going to mitigate the sound that's going to the west? I, I would be, now Craig, you've been out in town. I would be happy to invite all of you to come out to town when they're having their sessions. It is, it's appalling. It's unconscionable. Now, I am married to one of those veterans that is, when you're around this all day, Craig, imagine, all day, you're out working on your property, and this is going off all the time. Now, my husband, I came home from work one day, and he had just had it, and he went down to the range. When is this going to stop? How much longer is this going to go on? By this time, it was already 6:30, 7 o'clock at night. Now, the sheriffs or the deputies that were there were very nice to him at the time. Sir, you have to leave. I brought it up at a meeting and was told, you keep your husband out of there or he will be arrested. So, you know, this is just a matter of the constant barrage, listening to it. We feel terrible for the kids. We feel terrible for everything else that's going on. We pay our taxes, and now if you buy this property, now, not only is all the, everything shifted, all the burden is shifted to the county, who pays the county bills? We're the taxpayers, right? We're the taxpayers, right? So now, not only has he treated us in this manner, but now we get to pay for it. So I would just like an understanding of how mitigation to the north and building berms to the north, how is that gonna stop the noise and the distraction and everything that's coming due west over that wall? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else like to speak at this time? Anybody? Board? Tony? Okay.
Yeah, is there anything more you wanna say about it, Tony? I know you've done, like I said, extensive emails and topics to us. Okay.
Anybody else? Give you a last chance to speak to the board.
Well, I appreciate all of that.
Oh, just a second here. I do have one gentleman. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Gary Beck. I live in Raymond, five nineteen West Central. I'm the mayor of Raymond. I'm sitting here on a double-edged sword. I hear the noise, too. I live almost three-fourths of the way through town from the firing range. I do hear it, and it is annoying. I'm not gonna deny that. But on the other side, we got one of the finest training centers, I think, in the state. But we have to put up with the noise. I think if not building some type of berm, some type of noise mitigation, we got a hole out there, and if you don't do nothing, it'll not improve. But if you do something, we might get a little improvement. You'll never get rid of the noise until you have an indoor range. It's as simple as that. So, I mean, we've got a great police presence in our town. It's benefited our town greatly for what we don't pay for. I don't wanna tell you guys that, but they use our businesses for breaks and stuff like that. I guess the actual idea here is to purchase the land to help reduce the noise. The noise will never go away, but it can reduce somewhat, so. Like I said, yesterday, there was firing down at the range, and we heard it. It was up City Hall. Was doing some work up there yesterday. We heard the shooting. Is it annoying? Yeah. But so is the train that goes through our town. 'Cause he blows his whistle four times going through town. So am I against it, buying that land? No. Something's better than nothing. Am I, am I four more shooting down there? Nope. I'll tell you flat out. But like Tony said, it's not going away, not for ninety-nine years. So let's do something with what we have and try to make it a little bit better, and I hope the people in town can understand that. I mean, it's not going away. It was put there, and you're right, it shouldn't have been put there. And can it go away? Probably not. You got a lot of money down there unless you do something else with it, you know. So, all right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anybody else for the last time? Make sure everybody had an opportunity today. Okay, anybody else? What's board's pleasure?
Well, I was starting to say, I wanna thank everybody for contacting us. It was important for us to hear from you as residents. That was two months ago that Tony brought this before us, and at that time, I think we all thought, you know, public input's what we wanted. Mr. Knep, you were the first person that contacted us, I think by phone, and several of us talked to you. And there were, I think, five or six emails, people that we heard from email-wise after your call. And I went back and looked at those over the last few days, and in every one of those, sound mitigation and safety was mentioned by everyone. And I think the only resolution probably for those of you opposed to it is probably relocating it, having it somewhere else so that you didn't have the sound. So other than that, you know, and I don't see that that's a possibility at this point in time. So to me, the mitigation and the safety concerns were something that I was pleased to see the sheriff addressing. I've learned a lot about it since I wasn't involved in the early purchase of this or the proposal for the quarry and the use of it for this firing range. But there's been every question answered that I've had, that residents have had for me, and so I will support this measure, this measure, the sheriff's measure to do this because anything that we can do for the safety and the sound, I think, is an improvement for the residents. And I know it won't address all your concerns, and I'm sorry for that, but I think it's a solution. So, thank you.
I'd say that's ten to fifteen years away at best at that, before that sound mitigation, whatever the hell you're talking about is gonna happen, and I don't see it happening in my lifetime.
What was that Lisa?
Those people are gonna have to suffer down there for the next fifteen years while we sit here and, okay, supposedly a mitigation. And one lady just told you, it's not gonna help. It's not gonna help. And the kids, what about the kids? What about the veterans that live down there? They vote, too.
Well, or anybody that's impacted by it, yes, I understand that.
Religiously.
Well, and Tony, I don't know if that's something that you've considered a mitigation plan. There was, I know a resident that asked about that, and I know that hasn't allowed you time to work on it, but you've made a lot of those improvements since you've, since they've obtained it. He talked about some of the things.
All I've heard him do is build buildings out there, is what the residents have told me. I haven't been out there in a long time. I didn't even know, I only knew there was one building out there.
Well, I can't answer that, and then we've been asked if we wanted to go out there and visit the area by the residents and also by the sheriff.
I've been out there, not in a range, but out when there's firing going on. Been at the fire station, been by the school, been down to friends' houses that live out there. It's not pretty.
Okay, then. Board, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
A second? With stipulation, Pete, can we look into that deed restriction then?
Sure.
Because, or not just look into it, they don't mean just explore it, but I mean, what we need to do to do that.
Right, and I wanna caution you that this is, this is the owner selling this property, so the owner is gonna decide how he's gonna sell it. Whether or not, this is a very cooperative owner. They've been very cooperative to deal with, and if we make this request to them, I guess it's up to them to decide whether or not they would.
Is that part of the motion?
Yes.
Is that part of the second?
Of course, they're grateful, Pete. They're going from making a dollar to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's true.
That would be, too.
Okay. I do have a motion. I have a second. Let's have a roll call on this, please.
Leland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
No.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
No.
Little?
No.
Okay, then. Last item on our agenda is number nine, any reports or information from the board at this time?
Just inviting everybody downtown to the Vietnam Veterans Memorial on Friday at three o'clock through Sunday at noon, a forty-five hour vigil for the forty-five veterans from Blackhawk County that were killed in Vietnam.
You still need volunteers. I saw it was in the newspaper the other day, so...
I still got a couple of slots open.
Okay, very good. Anybody else, board?
I guess offering condolences to the family of Barb Brown, who was a community activist, and she was very critical lately, I think, to putting the statue on the courtyard for the woman's vote.
Anybody else? With that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks.